We're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of Hamilton City Council. This is the swearing in ceremony as well as our organizational meeting. It is December 15th, 2021. We're here at 345 High Street in Hamilton. Mr. Lawton offering a prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able. I'll just go ahead and do the prayer. Almighty God, thank you for helping us have a successful 2021 despite challenges. Please protect our first responders, our military personnel, and travelers, especially during this holiday season. Provide care to those suffering from the heartaches of the tornadoes that devastated our country. And please help us to serve and give back to our city, the city of Hamilton. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. How I believe we'd like to handle this would be we're going to swear all four people in first, then comments by those who wish to make comments after being sworn in, then comments by the other three if they want to give any or any jokes or anything like that. And then we will go into a roll call and then an organizational meeting. So Judge Gademeier, are you ready to start swearing people in?
Sure.
Okay. I think I didn't know it, but I'm actually first. You're going to swear me in. Is that okay?
Perfect.
And just run with it no matter what.
Yeah.
All right.
So it's really an honor to get to swear in anybody, but especially this group that I'm going to get to swear in tonight. The city's got so much good stuff going on and the council members and Mayor Muller have done such a great job. I think people are going to look back at this timeframe, at this period of growth for our city, and they're just going to be amazed at how much was able to be done and how many good things are going on. So it's awesome and I've known all of you for a long time, so it's really a pleasure to do this. So Pat?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand.
Your Honor.
And repeat after me. I state your name.
Pat Muller.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respect.
That I will in all respect.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Hamilton.
Observe the provisions of the Charter of the city of Hamilton. That was kind of tough.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Mayor of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mayor of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Judge. Next, we have Vice Mayor Michael Ryan being sworn in.
Michael, raise your right hand. I, Michael Ryan.
I, Michael Ryan.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will obey the Constitution.
That I will obey the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respect.
That I will with all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Vice Mayor of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Vice Mayor of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Next, we'll have Councilmember Tim Nab.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Timothy Nab.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respect.
That I will in all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Councilmember of the city of Hamilton, Ohio. Thanks, Judge.
Now, we'll have Councilmember Joel Lauer sworn in by Judge Eric Niehaus. Joel, please raise your right hand. I.
I.
State your name.
Joel Lauer.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I obey the Constitution.
That I will obey the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respect.
That I will in all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of councilmember.
The duties of the office of councilmember.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to thank both judges for swearing the four of us in. You folks are great public servants and Hamilton County are proud and honored to have two of you folks being judges here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we need to get your signature back.
Oh, we got to sign things too? I think I even know that by now. Okay, we'll sign up, speak up, and then we're going to have an organizational meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel.
I should.
While they're doing some of the technical stuff over there, Vice Mayor Michael Ryan, some comments you want to make at this particular.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my wife Amanda and my parents Donna and Vicky for coming tonight, and I want to thank them for their continued love and support, especially during this past election. And thank you to Judge Gademeier for swearing me in. And personally, I want to thank the residents for giving me another opportunity to serve them and our great city. I am extremely grateful and honored to continue my service to you and our community as your vice mayor. Our city is in great hands. We have the best people doing the best job for our community. We have a great council, a solid team, who are dedicated to making Hamilton a better place to live, to work, and to play. Leadership is the capacity to translate vision into reality. These were spoken words by Warren G. Benis. Council, we are all visionaries, and our visions are becoming a reality in Hamilton. We are going to continue to achieve many great things, and I'm so excited to see what the new year will bring to our community. I want to congratulate Mayor Muller and Councilman Nab on your reelection, and congratulations to our new team member, Councilman Joel Lauer. Thank you.
Councilmember Tim Nab.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank my wife Pam and the rest of my family for all of their support during these past 12 years and journey as serving as a member of city council. I'm fortunate to have started this journey, as I said 12 years ago, and to be reelected for the next four years. I'm very, very proud of all that we've accomplished, all of the opportunities that we have brought to the city that we're going to see come to fruition over the next years. More and more businesses, more and more people are moving to Hamilton on purpose as a design, as part of our business plan, as part of our promise to the 63,000 residents that live, work, and play here. I'm very proud of our city team members, all of the staff, all the folks that work for the city 24 hours a day, seven days a week, those public servants and all the people that come to you when you're in need, our first responders, the police, fire, the teams of members of our city streets department and public works team, infrastructure teams, all of the different departments in the city that add value to be Hamiltonians. So I'd like to thank Judge Gademeier, Judge Niehaus for being with us tonight to honor us with the ceremony. I'd also like to congratulate Mayor Muller, Vice Mayor Ryan, and our newest team member, Joel Lauer, as we start the next four years of work as your city council team. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Joel Lauer.
I'd like to thank my family and friends who came out tonight. I'd like to recognize my mother, Wendy Spurlock, Mick Tasso, and Frank Fearman, who gave me one of my first jobs, and I can't believe he was patient enough to stick with me. But I really want to thank all you guys for coming. Second, I want to thank the people of Hamilton. It is an absolute honor, and I am excited and anxious to get started in this new endeavor for myself. I have many friends still from my childhood, and I want to thank Eric Niehaus, who sworn me in tonight. We've been childhood friends. We were on the All-Star team together at West Side Little League, and my family and friends are still intact here. I'm very glad to serve. I made a promise that I would do my best to serve every single day to the best of my ability for the citizens of Hamilton, and I am honored to be a part of this committee and a part of the other members of this community who serve in leadership positions. I am thankful for everybody that has supported me.
I just want to say the voters have placed their faith and confidence in us. Let's get to work, okay? All right, ready for a roll call for this particular city council? Yes, sir. Let's roll. Ryan.
Here.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Muller.
Present.
Okay, we're going to start working. This is now going to be the organizational meeting. The purpose of this meeting, organizational meeting, is to make appointments to various committees and commissions. We'll just go 1 through 23 and just kind of see where we're at. First, we have the Ohio Municipal Electric Association Board of Trustees. I believe Councilmember Vice Mayor Ryan, you are on that currently, is that correct?
Yes, I'd like to retain that if that's okay.
Okay. Who was the alternative on that? Do we recall who the alternative was on that? Alternative, I'm sorry, not alternative, but alternate?
From 2019, I don't recall there being an alternate.
I don't think we had one.
Okay. It's good, safe to have one. Who wanted to be the alternate for the Ohio Municipal Electric Association Board of Trustees?
I'd be glad to be an alternate since I've done it before.
Carla Fear. Number two, the Community Improvement Corporation has various bylaws. Mayor and Vice Mayor serve on that. There was a question about if there could be an alternate to that, and I spoke with Stacy Dietrich, who said that we'll have our CIC annual meeting February 28th of this year, so we're going to go ahead and change the bylaws to provide for an alternate in that situation. So we'll take care of that after February 28th. Hamilton City School Board Liaison, Councilmember, I keep on saying Councilmember, correct me, would you please? Vice Mayor Michael Ryan is current liaison and, did you want to continue that?
Yes, and I think me and Joel kind of chatted about this. He'd like to get involved with that as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I know you're ready, willing, and able. Thank you. HEDC Executive Committee is also, by their bylaws, has the mayor and the vice mayor on that, so that is taken care of. Architectural Design and Review Board, I served the last few months on that. Does anybody on council wish to be on the Architectural Design and Review Board? If there is no one, I will go ahead and continue to attend meetings.
Can we have an alternate on that? I mean, I don't mind filling in, but, and if I could interrupt for one minute.
Sure.
For Joel's benefit, do you think maybe we could give the day of the week and the time this meets?
Yeah. Well, I tell you, I don't exactly have all those particular dates in front of me right now. If you are currently on it, do you have all the days and times on it?
I think our clerk does.
For, at least for the Architectural Design Review Board, they meet every first and third Tuesday of the month at 4:00 PM.
All right, and those meetings are all at 4:00?
Yes.
Okay. I'm unaware by their bylaws if they do have an alternate process.
We did have a, Mr. Mayor, we did have an, I was alternate with you.
Yeah, that's correct. Vice Mayor, you were.
So, Councilman.
I just said as Vice Mayor. I'm not going to make that mistake ever again.
You're right.
Until next week.
Till, yeah, till next time.
Till the next number, yeah. It's a 4:00 meeting, and that's difficult for some. I don't think it's automatically a Vice Mayor, but we did that as a result of some changes we made during the mid-part of 2021. If anybody who can make a 4:00 meeting, at least be the alternate for a period of time, I appreciate getting that resolved now. It's a 4:00 start.
What, is it a certain day of the week, did you say?
Tuesdays.
Yeah, first and third Tuesdays of the month at 4:00 PM.
I can be an alternate.
Thank you. Jet Board, currently it's Councilmember Eric Pullman, and you wish to still serve on that?
Oh, yeah, I've got my first meeting, I think.
One of those meetings.
Yeah, one of those, yeah.
One of those meetings.
One of those, yeah.
When are?
When are those meetings?
I'm sorry, I don't know. They just, we have our first one that I remember coming up this Friday.
I think by their bylaws, they have to meet four times a year, and so it just is a matter of when there is something on the agenda. Because when I was on it, we had to do one in like November and December to meet that.
I think, I did one on video, and I'm doing one actually up at trustees. I think on the, yeah, that's going to be up at the Fairfield Township.
Yeah, I believe they have quarterly meetings to review the finances.
But this is actually the only two that I remember. So, but yeah, I'm going to, I'll stay on it.
Okay. I'm not sure if those bylaws provide for a formula for an alternate. Does anybody, when do they meet? When do they actually meet? They meet quarterly, but what day of the week, what time of the day?
Again, we're meeting on a Friday at 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
Yeah, so it's, and this is really the only second one I remember.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd be glad to serve as an alternate.
Great.
Under our provisions.
Councilmember Tim Nab. Number seven on our list, Planning Commission, that is the mayor, the alternate was as Vice Mayor, Councilmember Pullman. Those meetings, we alternate an evening and an afternoon meeting, Thursdays at 4:00 or Thursdays at 6:00. And I'll, ones that I cannot make, it's rather rare, but if there is an evening meeting, could you make a 6:00 meeting?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
I can do that.
Okay, we're going to put you down for right now as alternate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
OKI, Regional Council of Governments, that has been Councilmember Susan Vaughn, and you wish to remain in that position?
Yes.
And Mayor, I serve as the alternate.
Great. If that's okay, can we have Councilmember Nab serve as the alternate? Okay. Criminal Justice Board, okay, that's an interesting group. I believe I sit, I know I sit at the meetings, and they are usually quarterly, but sometimes Public Safety Director Scamisi attends, sometimes Police Chief Bukhaid attends. So I guess by the terms of their bylaws, I will be the official member, but at times, because sometimes it's more appropriate to the Public Safety Director or the Police Chief attend those meetings. Youth Commission, number 10.
Mr. Mayor, and Joel, I'd like to talk with you about that.
Yes, sir.
Because of the last two years of COVID, in this most recent year we're in, both principals had deferred in things. So Susan, you had talked to me about doing so. I'd like to stay engaged with the Youth Commission if we can re-engage that, pretty much like civics will be next, yeah, but I thought about that for us too and our work with the youth of Hamilton and things.
Tim, I, do you see, I mean, you're the one who helped create the Youth Commission. Do you see any kind of a problem of having three councilmembers on that commission?
Not at all.
Okay, we can go Tim, Joel, and Susan on that. Is that okay with the rest of council?
Perfect.
Great. All right. Okay. Now, we next go to SELF, and we already had a resolution recently appointing Councilmember Eric Pullman as representative for SELF. I don't know if we've ever had an alternate on there. It might not have been on SELF.
I didn't see an alternate from last year, but that's.
I've been on that board for 12 years as councilmember as well as citizen. Let's check their bylaws on that, but for now, it's definitely covered with you, Councilmember Eric Pullman, correct? I'm on SELF.
And I would make another suggestion that Joel, you might want to think about being an alternate on SELF.
Yes, sir, I would like to be that.
Because I know you showed some interest in that, so if you wanted to do that.
I will contact Jeff Diver herself and see if we can create that alternate position. That will definitely take care of somebody on the city being on all those SELF ordinances. Civic State Representative, I've been doing that, I'd like to continue doing that because I do have to give a speech at the Chamber of Commerce gathering on that, so who wants to join me as Civic State Representative? It is fun, it's rewarding, but you got to be able to maybe go to some after-hours events as well as that particular luncheon that is at 12:00 on Thursday when Rotary meets and the joint Rotary Kiwanis meeting.
I'd like to stay on that with you, Mayor, if we might, okay?
Okay. And it's one of those things where if a third person wants to come to an event, or it's wide open as far as that goes. Okay, Ordnance Review Committee. I know you are the chairperson, I'm sure you want to keep that position. It's a very well-run committee, and Susan, you are currently on that as well?
Yes.
And I'll be honest with you, folks, being a lawyer, I believe it's a benefit to be on that Ordnance Review Committee. I'd like to remain on that committee, if it's okay with everybody else.
Please do.
All right, now go to the TID. That was you, Councilmember Eric Pullman. Comments about TID?
I absolutely love it and I'd like to stay on it because it's a good organization. I have a lot of interest in it.
How often do they meet? How often do they meet?
We meet once a month.
Okay, what time, what day of the week and what time of the day?
It's usually going to be 8:00 in the morning, 8:00 to 8:30, depending, and it's Mondays, I believe.
As long as you've been on it, has there been an alternate?
No, I don't think I've missed one yet, so I don't think there's been an alternate.
You know, maybe with some of these, we need to check with the bylaws of these organizations and see if there's a provision for an alternate. When we talk about alternates, I think how important they are, because if one of us can't be there, we got somebody there from the city of Hamilton, so.
Keeps the continuity. I mean, I can see a benefit on everyone having an alternate if it's possible.
And I believe the TID would be a very good one to have an alternate on because there's a lot going on with the TID.
Can you check with that and give back to council based upon bylaws?
I'll call Mr. Hassler, in fact.
Should we go ahead and appoint him now while we're here, and then if it doesn't happen, we can?
Yeah. If there is somebody who that timeframe fits their calendar, who would want to be TID? It's a very important group.
But it is usually 8:30, 9:00. Sometimes they'll have, they just had breakfast, so that was, we were just on Monday, I believe, is what we do on those. Trying to look at my schedule again here. TID's second Monday of the month, and it's at 8:30, 9:00 is usually when they, they're not very long meetings normally, so if somebody can make that. It's very interesting.
Since I probably will never have to go because Eric doesn't miss them. And I've already been for six years, so I'm happy to be the alternate if you need it.
Carla Fear, alternate. Thank you, Carla.
And I'll call Mr. Hassler.
Just make sure that everything is by their bylaws. Okay, Government Affairs Committee, that meets Friday mornings, 8:00, once a month at the Chamber of Commerce. Councilmember Vaughn, you're on that.
Yes, I'd like to continue.
I'm on that, I'd like to continue, but I like to have a third person because to be an alternate for Susan or myself, because every once in a while I miss them, and it's, it is a very good group. Is your schedule permit that?
At the chamber?
Yes.
Yes, I can be an alternate.
Is that okay with everybody? Councilmember Pullman, okay? Okay, Seventeen Strong Advisory Board. And again, that's probably got their own bylaws. I know you're on that councilmember, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I almost said councilmember, but I dropped the R, so I didn't finish it. Tim Nab, you're on that?
I am.
And I am as well.
Okay.
I would like to stay and work with Seventeen Strong.
I would as well.
Joel's expressed some interest, and maybe it's a good idea. I would allow him to take my spot just so he can get involved. I've been doing it for four years, and I know he's expressed some sincere interest, so I, maybe it's a good idea.
You're good.
I would appreciate that.
You're on.
If you have some ideas working in the schools as well right now with Seventeen Strong.
You're on. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
No problem.
Okay, that brings us to American Public Gas Association. Who was that last time?
That was Susan, wasn't it?
It is Susan.
Susan?
Oh, it's.
I didn't know that. Okay. That wasn't on my list either.
Yeah, I've got it on the old list right here that Daniel sent.
Must not have met due to probably some various issues over the last two years, and that kind of stuff has happened over the last two years.
Yeah. I, yeah, I think we had one Zoom meeting at one point, but yes.
You're good for that?
Sure.
Okay. Finance Committee. Well, we found out a finance committee that you could put three members on it, but seven members show up, and that's how important finance committee meetings are. Tim, you're the chair of that.
And I would like to stay on in that function, thanks.
Okay. No, I went to meetings, I guess I was an official member on it, but here, Councilmember Pullman, you were on, were you on the committee on that?
And I do like that. I would like to stay on it.
Okay. Anybody else who wants to be on that committee? Because I'll go to meetings whatever anyway on that, but who else might want to be on that committee?
What time is that?
8:00 in the morning, usually quite often towards the end of the year, but sporadically during the year, 8:00 AM in the morning.
I'm going to pass on that.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think I'll just go and stay on that committee. Anybody can go to those meetings. Anybody can go to those meetings, they're welcome. We'll put notice out when more than three of us are there, and I think you'll probably see most of us go to those meetings if they have the schedule which permits that. Land Bank, who's on Land Bank?
I am on Land Bank.
Okay.
And do, did we have an alternate?
I do not know. I mean, who went to, who went to the meetings?
I went to the meetings, but sometimes when I couldn't make it, Lauren Hirschbach, whose name I can't remember.
Carla?
We have, Tim is alternate on the list.
Would you want to swap and be the main and I could be alternate?
Do you recall what time of the day, Carla, or do they vary?
It varies, it's usually like at 11:00 or 1:00.
I can do that and make it work.
Okay.
Thanks, Carla. If you'll be my alternate?
Yep.
Great.
Okay. Tim Nab as councilmember attending and Councilmember Carla Fear is the alternate. He went with Parks Conservancy Board. Carla, you're on that.
I'm on that.
Okay, now, does that board provide for alternates?
I, I don't think they do, but I can find out.
I know Susan's expressed interest in that.
Yeah.
Again, that's something which we could have a notice if any more than two or three or four of us show up, but.
So we'll just list Susan and then I'll find out?
Yes. That'd be great.
Thanks, Carla.
Okay, Butler County Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Assistant Manager, do you go to those meetings?
If not.
Okay, they've got you and I down. I'm not sure if they officially met very often last year, or Public Safety Director Scamisi went to that.
Scott Scamisi has been my designated.
Okay. We'll just keep having him do that because I know he works well with that group. Police and Fire Commission, we have not met, that might be one which could be potentially retired at this point in time. I'm not sure if we really need it, we had that going for a while, and do you see any kind of, you might see a need to keep that going at this point in time?
I think it was Scott in the place that he's in, he's really taking care of a lot of it.
See, I don't think there is the need, because that was before we had Public Safety Directors, so we're going to probably retire that one, if that's okay, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Emergency Inclusion Commission, I was not on that one, and I am unsure as to who served on that.
What is our status with it now? Are they still meeting?
It's created by ordinance, so I imagine they have to be meeting at times.
They are meeting. Gene Pope is the de facto head, since he's over civil service and HR. Their meeting schedule is not very frequent, I want to say maybe three times this past year, they prime that. I think it would be good to have a council liaison to it. I can't, I don't think they're a set meeting schedule, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
The, you were appointed as council member, we had Nab as an alternate.
At the onset of that commission, I recall serving on that.
Okay.
We had a busy schedule, at the onset to set up, I was to set up all of those functions of the commission, but then as the commission took over, as our city manager shared team members within the city organization, administration stepped in, Pat. So I'm willing to serve on that again, is a matter of if it's four times a year, that we might be called to service, I'm fine.
I'm fine with doing that, too.
Do you want to reduce that to a member and an alternative also?
You know, that was created by ordinance, and I think that ordinance probably has specifically who can serve on that, like what numbers, is that correct, law director?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe how we set it up is that there were supposed to be council liaisons, and then those people would assist also in selecting of members, et cetera.
That's right, because I remember now, because I know I pointed someone, yeah, I know I did.
So didn't we all appoint someone? I know I appointed.
I think we did back in the day.
But then, but then it changed the dynamics also, so do we?
Carla, if you'll remember, there were probably 20 people that served on that commission, it was a very large committee commission.
You had a refresh at some point in time, so I think.
Yeah, and per the refresh, we need three council liaisons.
Okay. Nab?
I'm willing to serve.
Okay, how about Councilmember Nab, Councilmember Fear, and myself for right now, then we'll take a look at it. Now, we now go to other, and I want to bring up just something that, over this past year, just being out and around, you know, I've talked to trustees from various townships, even village council members from around Hamilton, and at one time we had these groups, Hamilton Fairfield and Hamilton Middletown, and I just am starting to see an importance to having maybe some of those regional type things start back up again. I had lunch today with the mayor of Fairfield, and we talked about having a Hamilton Fairfield start up again, even if it's quarterly, and I think Mayor Ryan was mayor, that that was probably a pretty active group. I believe that the Hamilton Fairfield Commission helped create the Joe Nuxall Way, that, you know, that's how you get to the Joyce Park, and Joyce Park is an example of a Hamilton Fairfield joint project. I mean, I'd like to see that start up again, and I know he's going to go to his council and talk about how that could look, and I think we need to take a look at that. And as this town develops more with Spooky Nook, I think how we work with our neighbors is hugely important, and as well as areas that border our city. I mean, at one time, we had like joint litter pickups between townships that border us and us, and those type of things do create, it's symbolic, but it also gets a few things done. So I like to have us consider creating those particular, again, it would have to be Hamilton Middletown, Hamilton Fairfield, or some, some manner that way, but I just think that Hamilton Fairfield is just an example of what we could do. I know he's pretty excited about doing that, and it might be good to talk about some things that our neighbors are experiencing that we experience, like for example, I think West Elton, B Street, Washington Boulevard borders township, affects the village of New Miami, and that might be a project that we then bring in to the engineer to talk about what the engineer can do. So I'm all in favor of it, I don't know what council's view is, it's going to take a while to maybe recreate again, but I think it's important that we do that. And I'm open to any kind of comment, because I just wanted to bring that up because we talked about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Ryan?
I think that is a fantastic idea, that is something that Councilman Davidson, who was just sworn in, we were discussing that prior to him getting sworn in, just a couple weeks ago, he mentioned, you know, establishing a working relationship, just something new, that, you know, they're a council, they're new mayor, and we can just start over and just figure out. Middletown Councilman Tal Moon, have a great working relationship with him. We're constantly talking about things, I mean, we're practically sister cities, we've got the same problems, the same issues that they have.
Exactly.
And I think we can work very well together by addressing a lot of things that our communities are facing, and even with the townships, I've got some solid connections with Liberty Township and the Westchester Township trustees, and they're really looking to expand westward to really connect with us and work on anything that would benefit the communities. So I think this is a great idea, and I would support any collaborative effort to get everybody on board.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, and I think maybe Mayor Don Ryan may be able to help us more with this, but at one time we did have it with Fairfield and Middletown.
We did.
And we rotated going to a different city where we would have the meeting, and like you said, with Spooky Nook, maybe to have Ross involved, just open it up to anyone who would want to be a part of it.
There are some, there are some incorrect.
Perceptions?
Perceptions floating around about what's going on in our city, and I think if we can correct that by working with and working with the townships and the other cities, it's going to go, it's going to go better. I mean, the fears, the misperceptions and all that, I mean, can hopefully melt away, so other comments by council on that idea?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lauer?
I've also spoken with Mr. Davidson, and at this time, where we are at in this town, I think that it is absolutely necessary that we take the opportunity to have more communications between neighboring cities and townships. We must cooperate, I also believe that that will create better business opportunities and bring, and draw more people into Hamilton if we can promote ourselves to each other.
Other comments?
Mayor, I had the pleasure of working on some of those.
Yes, you did.
Joint committees back at the inception and things, and as we heard when Mayor Ryan was in office and the collaborations that took place back then, so I'm glad that we're going to revisit this opportunity, but also enjoying the townships and neighbors of Hamilton and things like that, they've got input and validity, as you said, Pat, working on what might become a thoroughfare between New Miami and Hamilton and North Hamilton Crossing and things like that, so great opportunity for us, thank you.
They're going to make us truly a stronger county, a county that's working together in the power of regionalism.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just one other comment, this weekend, last weekend, I had an opportunity to be in Oxford with colleagues, and there were several members of city council. They were so complimentary about Hamilton, and just can't believe what's happening here. And so a couple of the council members said to me, we want to learn from you, and it got me thinking about even a summit. We don't have to have regular monthly or bi-monthly meetings, but if we got together as a city, because I encourage them to watch Joshua's State of the City address. I think we can all learn from each other, it would be great to hear what's going on in their communities, so we could be in partnership, but perhaps, you know, when we extend out a little further, like Oxford, to have a summit or something where we got together once a year, maybe.
Absolutely. I think that's a, I think that's a great idea on that.
Concurrence that we create, we have created discussion, we don't have a whole lot of meat on this skeleton yet, but I do believe that we can put together Hamilton Fairfield, definitely, Hamilton Middletown, maybe have one with, maybe all the townships in Hamilton together, and then just roll with this for a little bit, because I think it's well worth doing.
And if the city managers are talking, which I assume you do sometimes, perhaps, you know, get them together.
And there's a version A and version B. Version A would be council members, version B is council members and city managers to be involved with that. And option C is council members talk and then bring in the city manager for one of those meetings. So however we put this together, you're a big part of this, city manager.
Mr. Mayor?
No, I am not. No, I am not. Councilmember Pullman?
Is this a possibility to get this together by the second quarter of next year? Do you think we could do it that quick?
Yes.
Because I think it's going to be that important when Spooky Nook does open.
Yes.
And the questions, because we're all out, and we meet these other council members and ask us questions, and there's a lot of rumors going on, and just kind of like with Ross up in here, you know, Ross needs to know what's going on in Hamilton, and if we did meetings like that, would that be an open public meeting, or would that just be?
We have to follow the sunshine laws, and I'm sure our law director will make sure that we follow the sunshine laws, however this is created.
Okay.
When we met before, it was not public, and there, if you remember, Tim, there actually was an agenda put in place, it wasn't just like meeting for drinks and chatting. We had an agenda, we would touch base about what concerns we have, what are you hearing about Hamilton, what are we hearing about you?
So you would only have three council members at the most on it, so we wouldn't have a quorum?
Right.
Okay, got it.
But we rotated.
We rotated council members.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
We give Carl a good memory, yes.
One thing.
We may be, I'm sorry, we may be able to find something, or Daniel may be able to find something in past records of how it was done before, because we had minutes, we had everything.
Yeah, like that, that keeps everybody involved that way, so that's, yeah, I'm all for that, I think sooner the better, I think that's a very important committee.
One thing you'll find is, is when you have a successful project, I know I'm listening to Joe Nuxall Way, I'm not sure how many of you folks were on the Joe Nuxall Way celebration when Joe was alive, you said that was one of the best things that happened because he was born in Hamilton, later moved to Fairfield, but he thought that was a great thing when the city councils, and you were there, Mayor Don Ryan, when those two councils got together, we got together somewhere in Joyce Park, I believe it was, and we celebrated Joe Nuxall Way. So the successes can result in joint meetings, which you have to give notice for, but we hope that those type of commission meetings will have successes, or the councils can get together. So all this thing about how that could best work, and I do believe by the second quarter we'll have one of them set up.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, a few special presentations you've got written down, one, two, and three, is this one a refresher about the rules of city council?
Yes, it is. So with your, included in your packet is a copy of a resolution for the rules of council that was adopted in 2014. For some of you, this is a refresher, but this is a general overview on how city council meetings will be operated.
Okay.
Since looking at these rules of council and kind of reviewing how we've handled audience of citizens this past year, staff is recommending a minor change at council's pleasure, if they wish, to allow the city clerk to have some discretion on items that are presented during audience of citizens. Sometimes we're given documents five minutes before a meeting, or somebody may be doing a presentation, in which we like to make sure that we have some discretion to make sure that everything's appropriate for council. Hypothetically speaking, somebody could be having a presentation which would have music that is copyrighted, and if that is presented at a council meeting, our broadcast on TV Hamilton gets shut down immediately. So if council is open to that idea, I can come up with recommendations in the near future, would definitely work with the law department as well to make sure that everything is okay with that, so that's my first presentation.
You and I have talked about that, and I know maybe treating a paper document like a petition, the night something's going to be heard, you could look at that petition before the actual council meeting starts and see that it's a petition, but there's other things that we have received and accepted that we have, that we look at, but maybe, I like the idea, I think it's a better way before we start having documents accepted as part of the record, but I want to separate petitions from that, because that's the same night that we have, you know, somebody coming to that podium talking about the issue.
Correct, and normally for special presentations, I receive these presentations well in advance, so even if there was a time period of about 24 hours before a meeting, that would give me the opportunity to make sure that everything would be okay with being presented to council, that would be appreciated, but we could, we're welcome to exploring this option.
Would you like to have us on council just agree that you and the law director will talk about how maybe we can best do that as far as a rule for council?
Are you comfortable with that? No matter what.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great.
I would just also point out that we also talked about electronic presentations, and a lot of things are digital now, and so people may come to the council meeting, you know, with something on a flash drive right before the meeting for the city clerks to present. We also want to have procedures for that, because historically people bring in, you know, a piece of paper and present, but now that we're broadcasting, we want to be cautious about what's being displayed on the screens in council chambers as well.
But that being at least 24 hours, so there's some discussion that's been taking place about 24 hours in advance on that. I just talked to the city clerk today about that very briefly. Everybody on council like that direction of how to handle exhibits that are brought to us to become part of the record, because they do become part of the record. All right.
Okay, and then for special presentation items number two and three, I'll be very brief with these. We have a vacancy for the Ordnance Review Commission resident member appointment, that is a vacancy that happened last year, and we have since received three applications, those were emailed to you, those are up to council's discretion on how they would like to appoint a resident member, you are the appointing authority for this, so as soon as there is some general discussion on how to move forward with this, we can then proceed with adopting the necessary legislation to appoint this member, as well as reappoint Mr. Acuff, who is interested in, who is interested in being reappointed. And lastly, for the Income Tax Review Board, this is a board that our former clerk, Nick Garukas, had solicited for back in 2019, early 2020. This board is composed of three members, two are appointed by council, one's appointed by the city manager. We have very strict rules in our ordinances on who can be appointed, so for some, you can have, you can't have our finance director, or somebody that's a, be a tax administrator, elected officials cannot serve, so it's very, very strict on how, on who can serve. I will follow up with council on if they know anybody who'd be interested in this, or if anybody on the community would love to serve, it'd be great to have them on, and to be able to follow up with them after this.
Memory may or may not serve me correctly, but is it, is there to be CPA on there? Was that what you?
I did not see a CPA within the description of who could serve, but it's fairly limiting with restricting like a finance director, or a tax administrator, or even city employees for certain appointed members. There's different requirements for who is appointed by council and who's appointed by the city manager.
All right. The Ordnance Review Commission, we just had a meeting this morning, when's the next meeting?
Well, the next meeting is the week after our first meeting, so if our first council meeting, if we could come up with an appointee, that would be great. And Daniel included the three resume, or the three applications in our email with these minutes, so you can look over them and let us know what your opinion is.
So we'll adjust that, the first meeting in January, and point that person through that at that council meeting?
Yes, so a decision does not have to be made tonight, but I can make, if we can make the decision official at the first council meeting in January via a resolution, if council that's a good idea on where they want to go with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Is, Daniel, is there, we have the three applications, right, on this? Is this still open for anybody, or is it closed out now? I mean, by the time the next meeting, could we possibly have more, or you shut it off at a certain time?
I believe we solicited for these applications in November, the window has closed since November.
So these are only three we're going to have?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Looking at the agenda, next I have Audience of the City Manager.
The only thing I have is some people were interested in seeing 45, which is the newest built-out floor in our building that O.T. Logistics has. I'm going to go up there for like a five-minute, very quick walking tour when this meeting is over, so if anyone's interested, we can take the elevator up and just take a quick peek on 45. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
Can I ask the city manager a question? How's customer first going?
It's going well, we're just waiting for the countertops to come in, we purchased software, we've met with E.D. Acres, you know, we did logistics, they're thrilled because they've lost a lot of packages, or they've at least been displaced in the building. We're hopeful to have that operational activity Valentine's Day or Christmas.
Okay, great, thank you.
Audience of the city council, anything you want to bring up? Councilmember Pullman?
I just want to congratulate Joel, the new guy here.
Thank you.
And good job on there, and welcome back, Tim, Ryan, Mr. Ryan, and you too, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's good to have the old team back.
Thank you.
To have, I think it was very important to retain some of the people that's been on here, so we knew we were going to have one new one, but it's good that we only had
So we knew we were gonna have one new one, but it's, it's good that we only had one, in my opinion, because there's a lot going on. And we still have two rookies here that are still trying to learn too, so. I don't know, welcome back. And Mr. Ryan was very nice to me. I told him when I got elected Vice Mayor, I told him, get out of my chair and he was real nice and just smiled at me. But he didn't do that to me today, so I feel kind of bad now that I did that. So, but welcome back.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else on council at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fearsy?
Hi, too. Welcome, everybody. It's gonna be a great couple of years working together. I especially want to thank Steve Caldwell on TV Hamilton. I think our first year with live streaming, the meetings really went well. I mean, I heard so many comments, so many ways, so many questions. I mean, it did everything that we hoped that it would do. So thank you so much for being here with us, Steve.
Anybody else?
Ditto.
Yeah.
I would just say likewise, welcome, Joel. Good luck. It's gonna be great. Thank you.
You're gonna say you're gonna need it.
Yeah, you're gonna need it. It's, it's great. I, it's been a, a real learning experience for me the past two years. I look forward to the next two and perhaps more. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity to be able to serve the city and so you're in for a fun ride.
Thank you.
And I think everybody's here to help you, so I think if you have a question, there's, everybody seems to help each other out pretty good.
I think I've been welcomed very well and I'm appreciative of all the questions that have been answered up to this point. And I'm very excited to get, get moving.
All right, I'm gonna finish up with a couple of things. First off, the wife of my barber, yeah, I got a haircut recently, watches, I believe, every minute of our council meetings, okay? She's a great lady. I went to high school with my barber. I'm not gonna say his name or anything like that, but, okay, Ron. That's number one. So thank you, Steve. I mean, people are watching and I, sometimes they've watched like the first half or in the middle of it. Some watched the entire thing, but we are reaching out to a lot of people, thanks to you.
Yes.
Today, December 15th, 2021, is Dr. Paula Weiserberger Day here in the city of Hamilton. Right now, she's probably getting her proclamation. We all know her as, as Dr. Paula. She's an oncologist. If you don't know her, I'm sure you know somebody who she has treated, educated, helped, and she becomes just like a member of the family. I didn't know this, but she went to St. Veronica and Harding Junior High School, which is where I went. So she's a neat lady and she's also been awarded Unsung Hero, awarded by Cancer Family Care for her compassionate approach. She is retiring after 41 years in the medical field. And absolutely great job, so it's her day. And Colin? Okay, this is your last meeting, I guess, right? Let me get this right. Did you start out on a quick strike team?
That's correct.
Trash. You're doing trash, right? Is that right?
I've done a little bit of everything.
You get trash a little bit too, didn't you?
Yes, yes, I did get trash.
Now you're going to PNG, is that right?
Yep.
So you're going from trash to tide. Is that basically right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right at the latter.
With a bunch of vaccinations in the middle, because I just want to commend you, because I heard from so many people how well you did in setting up those vaccination appointments. Your customer service, I heard from so many people, was good. And you helped us out as, as assisting the city clerk. You helped out the planning department, but we're gonna miss you. You're a great city team member. But, you know, I understand you've got other places you may want to try and see what it's like, but we wish you, we wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? Anybody else on council at this point in time? Is there a motion that we adjourn? Is there, I'm not going to the second session, are we? Okay, there's a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Fearsy, seconded by Councilmember Pullman. Roll call vote on our adjournment, please.
Pullman? Yes. Fearsy?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Three, four, five, missing one.
I don't know.
Mueller?
Yes.
It's out of order.
Nab says yes as well.
And Nab, okay.
Sixty.
You threw him sitting up there.
656, we're adjourned. Let's have a great 2022. Thanks all for being a part of this. Thank you, Judge, for swearing people in. And that's it. Thank you.